Recording in progress.
As posted in the agenda, it is anticipated we will go into executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss litigation relating to petition 5005, 1044 Route 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. This board will return to open session upon conclusion of the executive session. The board can move to enter executive session if it is determined by the chair that meeting in open session could have a detrimental effect on the position of this board. The chair so declares that it would have a detrimental effect if the session were conducted in public. Do I have a motion to go into executive session as recited?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I was gonna ask for a second. We're gonna take a roll call. Barbara?
Yeah.
John?
Here.
Anthony?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
And I'm here as well. So we have five present. We're in executive session.
Recording stopped.
I think you were, I really appreciated the heads up.
Recording in progress.
I'm not on that group, so.
Oh, perfect. It'll be built. Glad to hear it.
I didn't realize Stewart Painting was this popular.
We're ready when you are, Mr. Chairman.
Are we on? Oh, we are. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yama Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is September 25th, 2025. We have two matters on our agenda tonight. We're gonna begin by doing a roll call. Barbara?
Yeah.
John?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
Anthony?
Here.
And I'm present. The quorum being present, we're gonna begin with the first petition, petition 5192, Stewart Painting, property location at 539 and 545 Higgins Crawl Road. Property's in a B3 zoning district, APD, and Zone 2. The applicant seeks a special permit per 202.5 for D1 use in Section 406 to relocate a painting, power washing, and carpentry business, and to store up to 800 gallons of hazardous materials. The applicant seeks a waiver, requests a waiver from the requirement of a certified plot plan less than two years old. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Patrick Nickerson, attorney for the applicant. To my right?
Sheldon Stewart with Stewart Painting.
Good evening. Could you please tell us a little bit about what you want to do here tonight?
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Appeals. As you stated in reading the notice, the applicant's seeking to establish a base of operations for its family-owned painting, power washing, and carpentry business, which has been around for over 40 years now. The business was formerly located in Hyannis in a multiple-unit building, but unfortunately, a fire not caused by the applicant was displaced him and his business to 68 Mercantile Way and Mashpee. So the applicant's now seeking to occupy the former Ford Diamond Electric Company building, where it will engage mostly in office use and storage of non-hazardous materials, equipment, and company vehicles. The applicant's been working very closely with Carl Lawson and has received the approval of the Board of Health, or the recommendation from the Board of Health, rather, regarding the proposed storage of 800 gallons of hazardous materials indoors and subject to a number of strict requirements from the Board of Health, ensuring safety of the groundwater with a number of conditions, including 150% secondary containment throughout the building, and certain separations of materials that don't necessarily, shouldn't be stored together. Examples would be paint, solvents, bleach, wastewater from cleaning of equipment either on the premises or at a customer's residence. Naturally, the majority of the business occurs off-site. Residential houses and commercial businesses where the power washing, painting, and carpentry will occur, then company vehicles, equipment, employees will return to the site to store materials and otherwise engage in office use. We did submit a memo dated, excuse me.
You get that here somewhere.
Yeah. Well, it was last Thursday.
I've read it. I can attest we have it.
Thank you. We provided an exhibit showing the relative properties in relation to each other, along with the deeds which describe certain meets and bounds descriptions of the parcels at issue. With that, I think that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, all right. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
This is both the square parcel and the triangular parcel as well?
Yes, correct.
Well, it's within the same use category, I think, is what's?
You might have upgraded that category a little bit, but it is in the general category. Yep.
So seems like all the correspondence is favorable. I think as long as you guys do what the Board of Health requires you to do, I'd be happy.
Okay. Anthony, questions?
I only have one, really, and it was more about the memo that you provided. You had said that you would occasionally have some all-staff training on it. All-hand safety meetings will be conducted occasionally. Right now, do you have kind of a timeframe that it happens, any kind of sort of routine?
Usually happens, it usually happens a second Wednesday of every month.
Okay. Yeah.
And we also do, we've also separated that out in our Hingham office. They meet separately.
Yeah.
So same day. We just do it as a Zoom from one location.
Okay. And just like Dick said, in these types of matters, we a lot of times look towards the Board of Health to make sure that they're in favor and find it appropriate. And, you know, I drove by, as we all have, a number of times to that location past it, and we know your business. So if the Board of Health is happy and they keep a tight eye on things, from what you're asking, I understand what you're asking for.
Okay. John, do you have questions for the petitioner?
I don't. I had Anthony ask my question on training, so.
Okay.
And the 16 employees would have?
Well, we have many more employees, but that's the amount that we would report to this on a regular basis. We have people that report to Hingham, report to Nantucket, and so it's just is probably the amount that would normally come to the Hyannis location.
They'd all be trained in the event of a spill, they'd know what to do.
All of our employees, yeah. Yeah, we have them in trucks and compliant with the building as well.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Barbara?
Nope, not having questions.
Okay. I just want to refer to the Board of Health memo. Do you have a copy of it?
Yes, we do.
Could we turn to page? Let me see where I'm at. Page five, Health Department Requirements. Can you read these?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to go over them, okay? Business must register annually for a Yarmouth Board of Health handling and storage of toxic hazardous materials license?
Yes.
In that?
Yes.
No materials may be discharged to the environment?
Yes.
No outdoor storage of materials is allowed?
Correct.
All materials must be protected from vandalism?
Yes.
All materials must be stored inside secondary containment of 150% volume of the total amount of materials stored?
Yes.
Containments of materials must be stored in such a manner to facilitate visual inspection of each container?
Yes.
Any waste material must be properly disposed of by a licensed hazardous waste hauler?
Yes.
Absorbent material must be kept on-site for use in the event of spills?
Yep.
Safety data sheets for each toxic or hazardous material must be maintained on-site and be readily available?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just see here. Conditions and recommendations. Just below that, we have some Board of Health hearing and license condition recommendations. You've looked at those before them?
I have.
Maximum allowed total combined storage of toxic and hazardous materials is 800 gallons?
Correct.
A detailed material spill containment plan must be conspicuously posted at all times?
Yes.
All employees must be familiar with the plan?
Yes.
Are they familiar with the plan now?
Yes, they are. Yeah, we had a similar plan that was in Hyannis.
I see, okay. A sufficient supply of inert absorbent, absorbinit, must be maintained on-site for use in the event of a spill?
Yes.
Were those kept in barrels or something?
Oh, they're in bags, they're spill containment bags. We keep them in the trucks. We keep them near the 55-gallon drums of paint. If any paint were to spill, they were able to put a containment around the spill and then use an absorbent to take it up.
Okay, okay. No vehicle washing or repair is allowed on-site other than the vehicle oil changes provided by their service vendor?
Yes.
Okay, with those conditions, you're willing to abide by those recommendations and conditions?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I think the only thing that I asked you to do, I did have a conversation with Mr. Stewart earlier about just giving us a parking plan for the front where the employees are?
Yes.
Okay. And any equipment, or if you got a storage truck or something like that, you'd put those out back in the storage area?
Yes, I can show you these.
Take those. That's okay. We just need them for the file. Okay. All right, you park right here?
Yep.
Okay, so these would be for trucks?
Yeah, and all that would be, look similar to like that. That would be existing.
Okay.
That would be all the construction and?
Okay, okay. We'll take these for the file.
And that's the existing parking.
Okay. And that just shows how many spaces he's gonna have out front. This just shows how many spaces he would have if he wanted to park some of his trucks in the back. Anybody have any questions?
You're gonna maintain the existing shrubbery on the triangle lot, right?
Yes.
Yes, per the 04 decision, I believe it was, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll keep these for our, okay, very good. All right. Anyone have anything else you wish to add?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience which is to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No one's raised their hand.
Okay. If anybody would like to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. All right, we're gonna close it to public discussion, open it up for board members to consider. Does anybody have any further discussion, or is anyone prepared to make a motion?
There was some, some things you came through in favor. I don't know if you want to mention that.
Oh, okay. We had a couple of.
Yeah.
There's no retail sales of any kind, right? No paint?
Um, no, I think you might have somebody in, though, to discuss a job or something like that, correct?
Right, yes.
Right. You're not a real retailer, correct?
No.
Okay. All right, let me see here. Okay, here is an email from Chip Herron of Kitchen Creations. I guess he's your neighbor, correct?
Yes.
"Good afternoon. I'm writing on behalf of the application for a variance for Sheldon Stewart for a property on Higgins Crawl Road. I'm a director butler and am completely in favor of them moving into the neighborhood. They're a longstanding Cape Cod company with a stellar reputation. I have spoken to many of the existing neighbors, and they too feel they will be a welcome addition to our small business community. Please grant their application. Please share this with the zoning board at the upcoming hearing. Thank you. Chip Herron, President, Kitchen Creations." Anything else? Is that the one? I have one here from?
Two others.
That's you requesting a special permit?
Two others.
They're in favor?
They're in favor.
Okay, we have two others in favor. We're gonna put them on the record as in favor. All right.
They cite Electrical and Fuller Electrical Company neighbors who are saying they're in favor.
Okay, very good. We'll put that on the record. Anyone wish to begin a discussion or make a motion?
I'll move to approve petition 5192, 5192 for Stewart Painting, as requested, subject to the Board of Health recommendations and requirements being met.
Okay, so as part of your motion, we would incorporate the memorandum of Carl Lawson Jr., dated September 15th, 2025?
You got it.
Updated September 17th, 2025 into the decision?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Anyone wish to have any discussion on the motion? The only thing I would add is that they, the business that's there, that is presently there, has been there for a long time. They've done a good job. I suspect you'll do the same. I don't think that by granting you this special permit, there'll be any undue hazard nuisance or congestion, nor will there be any detrimental effect to the surrounding neighborhood or the zoning district. So I do think you meet the criteria for special permit.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's five in favor, zero against, counsel. As you know, there's a 20-day appeal period must lapse after we clock the decision with the town clerk. After that, Dolores will contact you for a special permit.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Very much.
All right, good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, now let me get settled here for a second. The next petition is petition 5193, NSG Mattachesett Village LLC and Nantucket Sound Group, the property owners. Property location at 897 Route 28 South Yarmouth. It's in a B1, B2, HMOD1, and VOD3 zoning district. The applicant seeks a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20 through 23. The project requires waivers from Section 202.5, A-12 multifamily use, 203, density, number of buildings per lot, and building separation. Section 203, building height. Section 203.5, building setbacks, impervious coverage. Section 303.4.4, parking buffer. Section 301.4.6, in-lot trees. And 301.5, parking spaces. To construct three buildings for a total of 27 rental units, of which 25% of the units will be restricted for low and moderate-income households. We have the petitioners.
How you doing?
We got one. What happened to the group?
I'm the one that takes the bullets.
Oh, really? What'd they do, run out the door?
No, coffee.
Coffee? Wow, okay. What if we have a question for them, eh? Okay. All right, so we have a packet here. What I would like to discuss before we get started is your project eligibility letter of October 23rd, 2023. Do you have a copy of that in front of you?
I do, yeah.
Okay, does everybody have a copy of that?
Yep.
Everybody pull that out. And this was 2023. Do you have any updated letters from mass housing?
No.
Okay. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but the pertinent parts that I want to address is, "Nantucket Sound Group submitted an application with mass housing pursuant to Chapter 40B. You have proposed to build 23 units of rental housing on approximately 1.09 acres of land located at 897 Route 28, the site in Yarmouth, the municipality. Mass Housing has performed an onsite inspection of the site, which local boards and officials were invited to attend, and has reviewed the pertinent information for the project submitted by the applicant, municipality, and others in accordance with the comprehensive permit rules. After an initial review of the site, the proposed plans, and several meetings with town officials, a clear consensus and prevailing sentiment was reached to reposition the commercial aspect of the project to the front portion of the site on Route 28. Simultaneously, the consensus was to establish the proposed apartments to the rear of the site where the former Cape Cod Laundry Building sat, requiring that building to be demolished." So that is what you've proposed. On page three, it says, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 paragraphs down. "This site approval is expressly limited to the development of no more than 23 rental units under the terms of the program, of which not less than six of such units shall be restricted as affordable, low, or moderate-income persons or families as required under the terms of the guidelines." I guess my question to you is, that's not what you're proposing tonight, correct?
There's been, potentially, there have been multiple iterations of this development over the last three years. We've had multiple meetings with town leaders, town department heads, and it initially was gonna be us saving the laundry center, creating a retail use there, and then building a building along Route 28, which was 104 by 62. That got poo-pooed because people wanted to see more commercial on 28 and more residential in the back. We thought we'd try to take advantage of the foundations of the laundry center and put the residential building there, but then all the parking was on Pine Grove. Now, we had a ton of conversations about trees, and we turned and we put the 102 by 64-foot building along Pine Grove, and we put the commercial on the front to do the mixed-use project, even though it's a housing development.
Mm-hmm.
And that building on the front was taking out all these beloved trees. And so we got many requests to save the trees along Route 28. So then we had other conversations in-house, well, do we really want to have this 102-foot wall on Pine Grove? And we're hearing from Mary Wagon that she'd rather see a village and should rather see walkability, and we keep hearing that, and we say, well, why don't we take this big building, convert it into three buildings, make it more of a village feel, open up walkability, open up more landscape? And what created there, it becomes a 52-by-54-foot building. So we had three 54, 52-by-54-foot buildings, and what happens in those buildings is we felt we had too many three bedrooms. We had six three bedrooms, and we thought that was too much for the market, too much for the site. So what we did, and that's how I say, we could go either way. The 102 by 64 is a 23-unit building. The 52-by-54-foot three buildings could be a 23-unit building. These are preliminary plans. We're getting more feedback on Tuesday from affordable housing, we're getting more feedback from you tonight. It's either we have six three bedrooms to make it 23, or two of those three bedrooms become a one-bedroom and a studio. And we felt that four studios rather than three bedrooms make more sense, and that's in the exact same square footage. So there isn't really a change to the square footage, it's just a change to the unit count because we pulled the three bedrooms out. So it could go either way, whatever your direction is, we'll go straight with the 23. I've talked to Mike Busby. Mike said, I said, "The department heads are asking about this 23 going to 27, what are your feelings?" And he said, "I really don't want to make a call from the department heads. Ask the question of the board." So that's why we just left it open, and Mike would say, "It makes sense what you're doing for what the market is demanding, and it's a workforce housing project development, and that the one-bedrooms and the studios are better than the three-bedrooms, the three extra three-bedrooms." So that's where that lies. And one thing that happens when we do that to 27, which is punishment for us, the affordables go from six to seven. So we have to add an extra affordable unit, which is good for Mary, and she's happy about that, if we keep the two three-bedrooms as four, one, two one-bedrooms and two studios.
Well, how long has it been since you've known that you weren't gonna do this project, the 23 units?
See, it's, the requirement is preliminary drawings for everything, and in a preliminary, we're just swapping ideas. We'd like to leave the next meetings with ideas coming back from you of how you think it should work. You can come back and say, "We only want 18 units," and we may try to make it work. Or we could say, "We're gonna go back to the 102 by 104 because, the 102 by 62, because that works better for us." It's just preliminary. Everything I gave you guys is just preliminary, and we're trying to work together to make what works best. You can see if we went through, you know, I have a slideshow of all the changes that were made based on the input from the town, and it's, again, it's either we have three bedrooms or we have ones in the studios, on our preliminary drawings, which are subject to change.
Okay, but you've abandoned the commercial component. Is that fair to say?
We still have land for a commercial component, but that has nothing to do with the 40B. That's an accessory use to the?
Well, the reason I ask is you're also looking to, and I need to know, how are you proceeding here? Because this, are you proceeding under B1, B2, or I don't think, I don't know that HMOD1 is gonna apply here, but?
We're running, you end the line in zone, and it's?
Yeah, I know, I know that it's an overlay district, yeah. What about VOD3?
It's not part of the 40, 40B. We might use some of the, some of the allowance?
Is that the requirement?
We might use that as one of our arguments to ask you for a variance, saying that, you know, 16 units are allowed in the overlay district, but we're not, we're not asking for variances off of the HOMD or the VC.
Well, the reason why I bring that up is the representation made to mass housing, you said that you were gonna have a commercial building in the front. That's consistent with the zoning bylaw, which requires a mixed use.
Right, so that would be a variance.
Well, we can waive that. We can give you a waiver for that.
Yeah.
But just so we're clear, because you are proposing to do what's a prohibited use in the B2 zoning district?
Correct.
Because you have no commercial component?
Correct.
All right. And Route 28 is our only commercial corridor?
Understood.
So we tend to be very reluctant to, we do have a lot of motels and hotels that have gotten old that we?
Right.
Convert to housing, but that's under a different section of the bylaw. That's under Section 404.
Yeah. And we may have done 404 if we were actually a hotel, so that's a big gap in that.
Had you considered taking over one of those and converting it?
We have that in mind, yes.
Well, I, I'm probably gonna go to the board and get some input because I, well, let me just be, let me get some clarity here. Are you not going forward with the commercial component? Are you not proceeding under the VOC3?
We're pursuing this under Chapter 40B comprehensive permit, which? We're pursuing this under Chapter 40B Comprehensive Permit, which we were trying to recover what we would lose by knocking down that 3,800-square-foot office building. We're trying to conform with putting a commercial unit out front and the residential in the back. I wanted to do, I'm in the restaurant business, I wanted to do a restaurant out there with parking off-site. But there was too much concern about the trees that would be affected and the whole use of a retail out there. And financially, financially, you're getting $40 a square foot for housing, and you might be getting $3 a foot for commercial. And it's just, it's just, this is a housing project. If we can find an expansion to do office along Route 28, or we find a spot to do a smaller commercial building in the future, we'd certainly explore that. But again, we'd have to find more off-site parking.
I'm just curious why you didn't go back to Mass Housing and amend this?
Because they look at that as an accessory, and they approve the accessory. They're just looking at 27 units of housing.
Well, so could we say that they've expressly limited this to 23? So we're talking about a maximum of 23 as a baseline?
You could, yeah. And we'd have no problem with that.
Okay, so we can eliminate four units?
Sure.
Okay, all right. I'm just going to reserve on this right here because I'm not sure, I'm a little unclear. I want to get some type of determination from town council whether you can proceed with this on what you're proposing, or whether you need to go back to Mass Housing.
Sure.
But for purposes of tonight, since you're here and a few other people showed up, I don't want to just send everybody away and go through this again later on. So what we're going to do is, do you have anything else you want to add right now?
That's the second, no.
Okay. And the plans that we're working off of are these plans right here?
Have you opened the meeting yet?
Yes.
You have, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's when I announced you, yes.
No, fine, no, fine, as long as you open the meeting.
No, 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 the meeting is open, but my concern here is that we dismiss this for a deficient application because you don't have the approval of Mass Housing. So I don't know that you have a valid project eligibility letter. That's the point I'm trying to get.
I know, that's what you
You represented something totally different, and now you're coming here and telling us you're not going with one building and a restaurant or commercial use. You're going with three buildings and more units. And you haven't informed Mass Housing, and you haven't tried
Mass Housing is very well aware. Mass Housing
Do you have anything in writing from them?
They're very well aware, yes, yeah.
You do? Okay, well, could you give that to us just for our, just so we're on the same page here? I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but I just want to make sure. Okay. Did you get anything in return from them?
Yes, Mike said that he would, if you guys wanted a change, if you would approve the 27 units, he would write an amendment to that PEL.
That's how they do it?
Yeah.
Nothing in writing?
He didn't want it from, he did not want it from the department heads. He wanted it from the ZBA.
Well, you went through all of this to get this, all of these going through department heads and the municipality weighed in. I don't have any, I mean, I do have some stuff here in writing that people have weighed in on this, but are you required to amend your application?
No. Everything's preliminary plans, and these are preliminary plans that we've
Okay, so when this letter says you're expressly limited to the 23 units and that you're proposing a commercial use
It's a 20% fudge factor. If I went to Hack and I said I went for 27 units, they'd say, "Well, that's only an 8% change. That's insignificant." That would be
Do we have that in writing anywhere, or that's just your, that's just your experience with them?
That's experience, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, well
John, if you just want to stick with 23, because I'm going to hear from Mary that she wants the 27.
Who's going to say she wants the 27?
Mary Wagon, she
I don't know, I don't think Mary's here tonight. Okay, folks, calm down now, please, okay? All right. Well, all right. I just want to talk to the board for just a second. Does anybody share my concerns about this project eligibility letter?
Yep.
I do, and we also have, not us, the applicant has a time constraint on it. If the approval is only for two years, it's a month away. So he would need another approval letter or an extension of it. This is dated October 2023, so it's only a month away.
Well, I'm going to, I'm not planning on taking a vote from this tonight, and one of the conditions that we're going to leave here with is I'm going to require that they get some type of letter from Mass Housing saying that they don't need to come back and do a full new application for this because this is not what they requested. And this is finally what we got in front of us, and it seems that there's been weeks and months of discussion with this, and you've been on notice of what you're going to do. I would thought you could have gone to Mass Housing and said, "Hey, this is what we're going to do. What do we need to do to make sure we're in the right?" But you're telling me that Busby and Hack just say, "I don't worry about it. There's 20% either way," but there's nothing in writing?
And we're still not done with the design. We're still going through the process with different boards.
So this design may change?
It could.
Okay, well, we'd like to discuss that with you, too. All right, so, all right, folks. So, all right, well, I think I'd like to reserve the rights of the board to challenge this project eligibility letter. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes. I am.
I agree with you.
Okay. But we're going to, we're going to table that to the side, and we're going to have a further discussion about this. All right. I do have a number of things that are written up for me, but we're going to do some questions, I think, right now. Does anybody, do you have anything else that you'd like to add right now, Mr. Cleary?
No.
Everybody has the memorandum from the planning board? Because I'm going to go over that next. I'm not just going to read it into the record. I want to go over it line by, or section by section, because I think you have one, too, as well, don't you? Okay, all right. All right, we have a memorandum from the planning board dated September 19th, 2025 regarding this project. They have nine sections that they have addressed relative to this project. I'm going to start with number, the first couple I just think I'll read. Community Housing Committee Memo. The planning board would like to express their support for the comments made by the Community Housing Committee and Mary Wagon. Affordable Housing CDBG Program Administrator within their September 15, 2025 memo to the ZBA. We have that in the file. Site Plan Review Comment Sheet. The planning board would also like to offer their support for the comments made by various town staff in the October 12, 2025 Site Plan Review Comment Sheet. Number Three, Eligibility Letter. The October 23, 2023 eligibility letter expires October 23, 2025, and is only for 23 units, whereas the comprehensive permit is seeking 27. The original application to Mass Housing was for a mixed-use development, whereas the comprehensive permit is for 100% residential. The local comprehensive plan and zoning bylaw promote mixed-use developments to try to balance economic development and housing. A new eligibility letter should be required for this modified project. So planning has weighed in on that as well. You've addressed that already. We've had a discussion about that. Traffic Report. A peer review of the traffic report should be required, especially regarding close proximity of the entrance to Pine Grove Road, Route 28 intersection. Do we have a traffic report?
We do.
Okay. I saw that in there. That was generated by you?
We hired a company.
Okay.
July. It was in the summer.
Folks, please, come on. I know it's busier in July than January. I don't know when they did it, actually. I just got this. June 24, 25. Did you hear the word for all of us, Debbie?
Make them do it next July.
Okay, hold on, folks, hold on. Don't kill me, I'm only the messenger here, okay? All right, now, all right, so we'll have that, and we'll take a look at that. Density. The density of 24.8 units per acre is too high for this 1.0-acre site and would be the highest residential density project in the town of Yarmouth. I looked at this, and my calculations are what you want to do. You can do 16 units per acre. Now, 16 units per acre times 1.09, my math comes out to 17.6 units. Have you calculated the minimum number of units that you need to make this financially feasible?
23. 27 works much better.
23? Okay. So your representation to the board is that if we say anything less than 23 units, that you can't make money on this? Hold on, folks, hold on, come on, come on.
We cannot make money with six three-bedrooms. If it goes up to 27.
Come on, folks, I need you to be quiet now. All right, well, I think, I'm not going to speak for the board members, but the 27 units was of real concern to me when I reviewed this. You're really, 17.6 is what you should be allowed. Now, you're looking for
It's not under Chapter 40B. That's underlying zone, and they've said that the 23 was within reason.
Well, you know, if you don't like
I don't want to fight with
If you don't like what we, what we say, you've got an appeals process. Okay, well, we'll talk about that later. Parking. A parking rate of 1.1 space unit is simply not attainable for this type of housing development, which includes 27 units with three three-bedroom units. Yarmouth is not an urban community with access to frequent and convenient public transportation, and many households have more than one vehicle. The American Community Survey ACS 2023 Five-Year Data shows South Yarmouth having 57.3 of total households with more than one car. Parking along Pine Grove, it says street, it's road, or within grassed areas of buffers should be prohibited. So you're proposing 1.1 spaces. How are you going to address that problem?
Management.
Management, in what way?
She must have some history with what's going on next door, but right now we have this big circular section, and we could create more parking if we took that out. The fire department right now doesn't want it there in the first place. So in their thing, they asked that it be at least leveled or taken out, and we can take that out and add probably another 10 parking spaces.
So I guess my question is, how come we don't have that in front of us tonight?
Because we don't want to, we want to do it all at the changes at once, and we're going to get requests for changes and studies from your group. We're going to get requests for changes from other people within this building and
No, this is the last stop. This, I'm not aware that this goes back and has changed anywhere else. It's only changed here. And that's a, I mean, you presented something to us tonight that we are prepared to vote on tonight based on what we have in front of us. That's the way I look at these. That's the way I've done them with 40Bs. There's been a few. We don't do a ton of them, but the ones that we have done, generally, if they're ready to go, they're ready to go. And I'm seeing your plans here and your proposal and everything, your architectural drawings, and I'm prepared to make a determination tonight. You, on the other hand, are suggesting that this is just a preliminary discussion. You're looking for feedback from us, and then we'll tell you what are our concerns, and then you may address them and come back.
Historically, we expect things like peer review, how they've asked for maybe a peer review of our traffic study. Sometimes there's peer review of the wastewater, which we don't have here. Sometimes there's peer review of still water. So when that all happens in most larger developments, and this is not one of them, we kind of wait in the first meeting, you know, we need to hire a peer reviewer. We need you to do this, we need to do that. That's larger projects. So that's what we really prepared and expected. We have brought these drawings to as far as we possibly could. So far, with the exception of a couple of items, I think from the fire department, that we would make changes.
Okay.
And there's a thing called final permit plans. So once it goes through permit, we're doing this all over again with Mark Rillis, where we get into the final permit plans, where it's going to be the parking lots, the units themselves.
You could say, yeah, we're the ones who approve the parking. Once it leaves here
I'm saying that the construction, the infrastructure
I understand what you're saying, but we're going to look at a parking plan, and we're either going to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Right now, you have 30 parking spaces for 27 units. You should have close to, what, 43, 44? So that's certainly a concern of mine. And the others will weigh in as well, but like I said, a final decision on everything is going to go before this board, and what you're going to build over there is going to be what we approve and not what we say, "Okay," and then you go and change them somewhere else.
Right.
We're clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven.
Buffers. Although buffer trees along Route 28 have been shown as retained, it looks like the rest of the site would be clear-cut. Is that your intention to do that?
No.
Okay. There are mature trees along the southern property line funding a residential zoning district that should be retained. In addition to supplemental plantings and possibly a fence, utilities such as transfor and emergency gas generators also need to be screened from Route 28. There are no buffer plantings shown at all along the western property line. Do you, have you submitted a comprehensive landscape plan to us?
No.
When would you be doing that?
It's not a requirement of the comprehensive permit application, so if you'd like us to do one, we can. The separation between us and the Bass River Motel is just a fence.
That's okay, yeah. But I think, and others can weigh in, but I think what we'd probably like to see is there are numbered trees along Route 28. I would like to see those not taken out. And the ones that actually run along Pine Grove are mature, and they're right out by the road. I don't, would hope that you wouldn't have to remove those.
I don't think it would have to remove. It's a parking lot we're building in right now, existing parking lot.
I understand, okay.
Probably have to trim stuff there.
So why don't we talk about architecture? The architecture is, this is number eight. The architecture is not remotely Cape Cod in style and does not match the town's vision for Route 28. The rear of the building faces Route 28, and the plainest, flattest side elevations along Pine Grove. Different materials, possibly roof pitch, and more detailed cornice and overall improvement of the elevations facing the public ways should be required. The third building in the rear of the property should be reduced to two-story structure to scale down the building as the project moves into the residential neighborhood. to scale down the building as part, as the project moves into the residential neighborhood. Was there any discussion about, amongst you and your, your partners, about making this look more Cape Cod with gable roofs and maybe cedar shingles, clapboards, trim of that nature?
The, the, the project is, is designed right now with, with clavboard. It can be clavboard, shingles as well.
I didn't see clapboards on there, I don't think. What, do you have one on clapboard? You know, a couple doors down there-
It's all cement board.
It's all cement board, but it's, it's not, it, it, you're talking hardy board?
Yes.
Okay. And, and you, you're talking clapboard style?
Yes.
All right, I don't think I have a plan that shows that. Is that what that shows?
Yeah, it's preliminary plan and what we've done-
Okay, I see that, yeah. All right, um, had, had you considered, those aren't double-hung windows, correct? Those casement windows?
Those are casement windows, yeah.
Had you considered double-hung windows?
We could.
Could you consider gable roofs and hip roofs?
What's happening here is these buildings are all electric and they're going to be run by self-generation and those, those roofs are going to be covered in solar panels and so we can't put the, the eaves.
Have you considered maybe just the outsides of them being gabled and hipped around and then have a cutout on the roof itself to put your solar equipment so we could capture the style that we're looking for?
From what I understand is a lot of those gables will block the sun and you cannot block the sun to the, to the panels and that's why they're done with flat roofs.
So, this, this project is dependent upon being powered by solar panels?
Yes. It's all electric, completely net-zero buildings.
But you could power them other ways, is that fair to say?
Back up, yeah.
You could power them without solar, correct?
Sure.
You could just bring in electric, you can bring in gas, correct?
That'll go against most of the state laws, but yes, we could do that.
What state laws?
State goals to be net, net neutral by twenty-fifty.
Not aware of any law that would prevent-
Yeah.
Gas and electric.
Again, I think that's going to, it's a concern, it seems, with every board that has weighed in, that everything that I have in front of me, that no one is in support of this architectural plan and they want to see it looking more Cape Cod. So, my question to you is, if you bring in, and you can show me a law that prohibits those utilities from powering these, but if you bring in gas and electric, let's just say you do, would that still make this financially feasible?
Sure, because it's more expensive to go electric.
Okay, so you can do it, all right.
We could do it, but-
Is somebody going to say you can't do it?
Nobody's going to say we can't do it, no.
Okay, well then, okay, then that's, that's fine. Then, then why don't we talk about then, so you, if that's the case, then you'd be amenable to redesigning these in a more Cape Cod style?
We're, we're going with what we're going, these are modular constructed buildings.
The, the answer is yes or no, huh?
It, it's in the eye of the beholder. I don't know what, I, I don't, I don't know what-
I, I'm not disagreeing with anyone out there. No, we're, we're the beholder. Is that something you'd consider doing?
We would consider using, uh, shingles, we'd consider using clavboard.
Okay, so what, what if we talked about you coming back with a plan? We'll just talk about the architecture, uh, that shows white cedar shingles, corner boards with trim, gabled roofs. If you need to put some mechanicals on the roofs, you could hip them, some of them like they did at the Cavalier. Have you looked over there at those designs?
I have, yeah.
Maybe something like that, which would be more compatible here?
We'll, we'll look at it.
Okay. All right, um. And then they just talk about future project changes. If approved by the ZBA, any significant subsequent changes to the project should be require a permit amendment, which that would be certainly a condition. What I'm going to do right now is, we've covered some ground here and I just thought it would be best if we went over this, what the planning board suggested. I know Mary Wagon has proposed a, a similar, and we'll talk about her memo in a moment, uh, but hers runs, kind of dovetails this one with a few changes. Did you see her memo? I'm not going to go to her memo yet. What I want to do is, we've covered this, does anybody have any questions regarding what we've covered here on these points? Anybody have anything to add?
Not yet.
Depends.
Well, I'll tell you what, um, did, did, why don't we have, go to questions of the petition right now for what we've been talking about so far? Dick, would you like to ask a few questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to think about questions as opposed to comments, I have a lot of comments.
I'm going to save them for a minute.
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't understand why s- some of the other, um, complexes in town that have been built in the not-too-distant past have the third floor under the eaves, which would go up and then units would be up on the third floor, but they, uh, they would not have this horrific, flat-roof-looking, uh, buildings that we have here. Not to mention the colors and the general layouts in general. I mean, was any thought given to that or we just went, went ahead with some box idea out of Somerville?
We actually like, we like them. And we- If, if you look at the, the building two down from me, that was a tax credit, light tech building, where they were able to pay six hundred, six hundred and fifty dollars a foot to build that. We're in the four hundred dollar foot, it's all we can afford on that site. You guys, the town gave them two and a-
Folks, hold on.
The town gave them two and a half million dollars to make those improvements. We're, we're on our own. It's a ten point two million dollar project, we have twenty-five percent affordability. We don't get the tax credits from the federal government, so that's all we can do. We can make changes. Uh, Zach, I just want to show you this because it's kind of, this is what I call a blank slate, where this is just the exterior of a building, where we could put anything on the facade. We can change those windows, we can change the materials. So, showing us is a blank slate, not some ugly building. And if we have, if, if we have to get, you know, fancy up top, we can do that as well.
Okay, all right.
All right, so in terms of this, there's a lot more to say about that too, but in terms of the site, we got a four-foot, five-inch buffer between you and the motel next door. Uh, that's supposed to be a minimum of ten. You're supposed to have a minimum of twenty to the, well, under our biol, under our normal biolas. Uh, twenty to the residential district directly to your south. Uh, you're directly across some houses across the street as well and we're only showing nineteen feet instead of the thirty feet required, normally required in terms of setbacks from Pine Grove Road. Uh, and, and just from what you're putting in here as trees to be planted, it would seem to me that, it does seem to be showing a few along Pine Grove being kept. But, I mean, I mean, it's just, just terrible. I mean, I could go on and on and I'm supposed to be asking questions, but I, I do want you to know at this point, in case I don't get to ask questions, that this is the most atrocious plan I've ever seen in my, in my time on the board. Absolutely, completely unconducive to what we would like to see on Cape Cod, what we expect to see on Cape Cod for that matter. And too many units, too much overdevelopment of the site and it's, uh, just horrific. I've never, I, I, I can't believe that anybody could come up with something like this for Cape Cod. Or, or even Somerville for that matter.
Go ahead, Anthony.
That is really hard to follow, Dick. For, for anyone listening to the crowd or, or potential future applicants, while I do appreciate the ability to change on the fly, I like to see a complete application when I sit down. So, we know what we're voting on and we know what we have and not just for myself, but for the community itself. I've read this many times, I don't see solar panels anywhere in here. The fact that it's changed from twenty-seven to twenty-three in the first sentence, I don't like that. I, I like to know what we're dealing with when we're going to sit down and we prepare and we've all driven by the property and we read through all the data. Uh, it's not the way the application should be processed, for the community's sake or for our sake. So, anyone listening in future applications, please make sure that when you apply, it's your actual application and what you're asking us to review, uh, for that sake. But I'll let the rest of the board and the community, I hope, speak.
Okay, John, questions, comments?
I have a few comments, I don't have a lot of questions. You know, I'm concerned about the design, obviously. But I, actually, I do have a question, why can't you put solar panels on a gable roof?
Because it doesn't face south. We'd love to do canopies, but people don't want canopies here either, so we're not doing canopies.
So, I, so I'm concerned about the design, it's a triple-decker, you know, again, that we'd see in any urban area. I'm also concerned that it's all hundred percent residential. I mean, that's not what our vision for this VCO D3 was. It's supposed to be mixed-use. And I know you originally had some thoughts about doing that, I'd like you to entertain those thoughts again because, uh, that's, that's what we were trying to create here. A village that would be, you know, enjoyed by everyone, not just the residents of that, that property. Parking, certainly a concern, uh, it sounds like you can address that. Traffic on Pine, Pine Grove, that's a concern. I, I did read through the traffic report, again, uh, I'm not convinced. The other thing I, I was going to mention, there's really no open space for, I mean, if there are kids living in this, uh, project, where are they going to go during the day or afternoon after school? Where, where are they going to play, in the parking lot? So, that's a concern of mine and then obviously the buffers I, I noticed. So, I do have a lot of concerns, I don't have any specific questions for you right now, but that's, that's where I'm at with this project. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
No, I totally agree with, um, Dick's comments and John's.
Okay.
I don't have anything further to add.
You know, I, I, I'm looking at a plan here, I guess I just, is this, is this the plan that you originally proposed right here?
Originally, originally, then we changed it and that was amended prior to the filing.
Okay, well, I mean, this, this is kind of a big building, okay? But at least the architecture is consistent with the surrounding area here, it's certainly Cape Cod. You know, I would suggest maybe you, in, instead of going with the third story, you do a larger gable that incorporates that upper floor into that gable, so- okay, we could maybe consider something like that. So, if we could cut this down a bit, um, why do we need three buildings? Should we do this with two buildings?
Probably not, you know, because I have to create, um, ten percent three bedrooms. So, I couldn't get the number with, within two buildings.
Okay, I saw your-
I could do, so to answer the question, that building can be do as, done as a six, which is two two-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms. Or it could be done as a seven, it could be done as a ten and it could be done as a twelve. So, the building is very-
Or you could build the buildings a little bit larger and put your units in there.
Uh, we're building these modular and we're, we're set on, uh, thirteen-foot boxes. So, we're not stick building this, we don't plan to stick build this, we're going to do the buildings, we're going to bring them in.
What, what's the dimensions of, the base dimensions of the boxes?
It's thirteen by, I think, sixteen.
So, what if you made one building thirteen feet longer?
We could look at that, I mean, we did have a one oh-two by sixty-four, was-
Oh, I don't want to, I don't want to have a-
Looked at that, what else?
I, I, I'm thinking, again, this is just my thoughts, I've been over to the site, I'm very familiar with it. I'm thinking if we could get rid of one building-
Yeah. We could push them all together.
Well, I don't want to push them all together, I want to have two buildings. And, you know, I think we could get enough parking in there. I think we could get good landscaping in there and I think perhaps maybe reposition that driveway a little further south down Pine Grove Road to get it away from twenty-eight. Oh, hold on, folks, I'm only talking about ten feet, okay? I'm not talking about, no, you don't like that idea, okay, all right. Hold, hold on, hold on, hold on, okay. I'm just, I'm just brainstorming, giving them something. Hold on, folks, please, please, please. I'm merely having a discussion with the petitioner about some ideas, okay? But I did, I, I, I did think perhaps we could, uh, make the buildings a little bit bigger and cut them down from three to two, because I don't-
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we, definitely, I mean, we have a, we, we have a meeting on a different property on Tuesday that we could bring up all of the concerns that were mentioned here tonight with the architectural team.
How do people feel about, how's the, but now, we're not holding anybody to anything, but I just, my idea of cutting it from three to two and perhaps- Hold on, folks, please, 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 come on, come on, come on.
I, I wouldn't be comfortable unless, uh, the three-story, I would agree, cutting it down to no more than two buildings, that the two buildings should, the third floor should be under the, uh, under the eaves to make it look more appropriate.
Like a habitable attic?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could, you could do it-
Yeah, like some of the other developments have done. That the whole outside of the building, one way or another, be made to look more Cape Codish. That if they're cutting down the number of units to what would be more appropriate, that they would then have trouble for proper buffers and proper plantings and proper retention of existing trees. That there should be a playground on the site, that, uh, the, uh, yeah, if they don't have any in-lot trees, that's another one that's missing. Uh, I mean, there's just on and on and on, it's been stated by a number of people here, this is just, you know, forty-B certainly allows you a lot of leverage or leeways, I should say, but it doesn't allow you every lever, leeway. And, uh, right now, you're looking for every leeway and then some. So, uh, uh, yeah, it's going to have to come back in a much different format than what I'm seeing right now. For my, for my approval.
Okay. Anthony, what do you think about the idea of going from three buildings to two buildings?
Three to two is preferable. Commercial on the ground is preferable, personally, and the buffer zone on the south side, if you're looking at it from twenty-eight, is absolutely necessary, I think, because that's where abuts the residential properties.
Well, I think we could move it towards, i- if you eliminate one of those buildings, it gives you a lot more room to situate these buildings, to move it away from residential properties. But don't forget, these are residential properties too, this, this is, your next-door neighbor is a bedroom, so it's not, your next-door neighbor's not a restaurant. That, if there was any commercial activity out, it would be out front, facing twenty-eight. So, we're not going to allow anything to be commercial, it's abutting any of the residential. So, we are talking about residential, but would, would give us a lot of latitude if we went from three buildings to two, to move it around the site with some different ideas. You're thirty-two feet in height right now?
To the, to the top of the parpet, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to see a planned, if we're going to do some habitable attics and some gables- I'd like to see a plan, if we're going to do some habitable attics and some gables and things that go up. If they went a little higher than 35, we could at least consider what we're looking at to try to get, have you get your units, 20 of them.
Yeah. And if you're reducing the number of units, and they're under a netted, a sloped third floor and dropping the units, then you should be able to keep within your 35 feet there, too.
You can see how that works out, okay? I'd like to see a plan on that one, okay? If it looked like you couldn't do it, maybe that's something we could consider, giving you some relief on the height, not a ton. But bear in mind that the height for the Cavalier, I think, is 45 feet. That's what it's allowed over there on the, under the 404. So, it wouldn't be totally out of scale. Certainly, we're not going to, I couldn't see us allowing you 45 feet in height. But if it was you cutting the building down from three to two, and we were trying to get gable roofs to comply more with the surrounding neighborhoods and the architecture, there might be room for a trade-off there. So, that's a possibility.
It's a possibility that we will discuss. I don't know how modular works with that third-floor mansard roof. I don't know how it works. So, we'll ask.
Well, you can buy modulars any way you want them, yeah. I mean, I have friends that build modulars, and you look at them, and they've all got gables.
I live in beautiful homes with-
So, you know, okay? You can do it. And I do agree that, in that way, I think if we went from three to two, we could certainly get extra parking in here, because parking is key. I really, I'm going to have a real hard time agreeing to anything less than 1.5 parking spaces per unit. And that's going to be tight. I've heard this idea floated around about a tenant can only have one car. Forget that idea. We're not going to put the burden on the tenant. The burden's going to be on the developer and the owner of the property. And we don't want cars parked on Pine Grove Road and tickets being handed out and violation notices. We don't want to go down that road. Let's handle it in the beginning, so we don't get there. Agreed?
Would you still want a peer review? If it's 1.5?
If we think it's necessary, sure. I'm just floating some ideas. I mean, I'm just one person just throwing things out for discussion right now. Because, I mean, the petitioner has indicated to us, this isn't even a final plan. He's asking for approval on, this is just a concept. So, since we're in the conceptual phase here, let's give them some ideas, and we can, we can have them go back to the drawing board and reposition some things on the lot. My thinking is that if you put a, well, if you put one building to the right of the driveway and give us sufficient buffers from 28 and set it back a little bit from Pine Grove Road, so it doesn't look like it's right on top of it, because I think you're at, what, 19 feet off the road right now on Pine Grove? That's too tight on Pine Grove. Everybody knows Pine Grove's busy, okay? Especially in the summertime. It's one of the busiest places on 28 there is, and it can be difficult to get out. So, we don't want to be overwhelmed at that corner. No, we don't want a big wall. So, we wanted to, so the further back that we can get it, the more scale that it's going to look. So, when you take that corner, I'd like to be able to leave all those mature trees that are there. So, really, it just looks like you put a couple of buildings right there, set back, and everything in the corner of Pine Grove Road pretty much looks the same. That's how I kind of envision it. Anybody have any comments about that thought?
I think it's a good thought. Reducing to two units would alleviate a lot of my issues, you know, it'd open up-
It probably wouldn't be reduced into two units, would push-
Two buildings.
Two buildings.
Two buildings.
Building units, yes.
And I think we're going to have to allow you to try to build one of those buildings at least bigger to get sufficient units. Can we agree on 20 units right now?
We can agree that we will be pushing two 52 by 54s together, and then having a 52 by 54. We could agree on that.
Well, that's three buildings.
That's the site plan review, that's the site plan, so.
Same size. Same size. We want you to, we want you to take two buildings. We want one building gone. You got two 54s, but what are they, 54s by 54s?
52.
52 by 52. So, make them 75 by 52, two buildings.
That's pretty much what I said, but I had it 104 by 52.
Well, you scared us with that word, 104. We don't like triple digits, no.
We will study the heck out of that.
Okay. Any other comments from the board right now?
Only if you want more.
Well, I think he understands the, and I don't want to speak for the folks in the audience, but I think I can pretty much take their temperature, and I think that they're pretty much in agreement with all the concerns that the board has, all the concerns that the town, the town boards have that have weighed in on this, especially planning. They put together a very nice memo. Mary Wagon put together a very nice memo. So, are you prepared to go back and try to redesign something for us and submit some drawings to us?
We will let you know on Tuesday, after we have our conversations with our architect, but I really do think it's easy enough to do the two-building design as long as we can get what we need to get, and it does not have to be 27 units.
Would you, would you agree, can you make this work with 20 units?
No.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're asking the questions here. Come on here, folks. Can't get it done for 20?
No.
You can show us that you can't get it done for 20?
We'll do the financials after we've gone through all of this and-
And build a nice restaurant there.
You know, I own three restaurants, all right? And every person I talk to about this, building a restaurant there, they're like, forget about it.
I think, I think any commercial component is going to have to be very passive. Anything like a, well, maybe something, you know, along the lines of a professional building or something like that. I just don't see any retail traffic, that would never work.
If they're building just a restaurant, then they don't need 40B, they don't need-
Well, they're not building a restaurant, that's not what they're proposing.
We had a design for a restaurant and a hotel, and that was fupu-ed as well, so.
So, what's the pleasure, what's the pleasure of the board right now? Do we want to continue this and have them, are you going to be able to get us? How long would it take you to get us some updated drawings?
I'd just push it back the month, see your next meeting in October.
I mean, we want to give you enough time. We'd like to-
No, we could do it. We could roll it over pretty quickly, but it wouldn't be in the two weeks.
No, 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 we'll give you two. We'll, if you sign an extension-
We're not signing extensions.
What's that?
We have 180 days. We don't need an extension at this point.
Oh, okay. Whoa, hold on, hold on. We've addressed that, we've reserved our rights, whether this eligibility letter is sufficient for them to proceed. Sir, 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 sir. I don't really want to have to do this again. No, 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 I mean start removing people, okay? I can't have you outburst like that, sir. I know, I understand your passion, okay? And everybody else. Okay. Well, I think at this point, because we don't have a set of plans here that we're going to vote on, what I would like to do is have the petitioner go back to your architects, draw us two buildings, stick them on the site, give us the architecture that we're asking for. If you want to use this as a template, is this what you, this is what you originally designed, correct?
That's a building we did in Situate, so.
Oh, okay, so you did this in Situate. Well, this is certainly more pleasing, I think, to, at least to me. You've seen this one, Dick?
Yeah, yeah, and that's-
Anthony and Barbara?
Better.
That's what they did elsewhere. But if we could have two buildings that looked like that, and you come back to us, why don't we try to do that, two buildings? If you want to come back with 23 units, come back with 23 units, at least to look at. And we can have an argument about whether that's something we can live with or not. I mean, I think everybody would agree that the site needs to be upgraded. It does. It's an abandoned laundromat right there, and it's just dilapidating. Does nothing for any of us to have it just sit there and rot away. I mean, if you're talking about having two nice new buildings sitting there that look nice-
Why so tall?
Well, we haven't, we haven't decided on what is too tall, but they can go up 35 feet by right. Well, I'm not getting into the signage part of it right now, but I'm just saying what they can build height-wise. But I would like to see what you can come up with and submit those back to us. And how long do you need, realistically?
Give us a month.
What's our November?
The hearing in November would be November 13th.
November 13th?
Yes, sir.
Would you be ready to go by then?
Sure.
All right, that's what we're going to do. We're going to continue this matter until November 13th. I'm not going to take any comment right now, because we don't know what we're commenting on. So, why don't we all get the new plans? We can all digest it, and then we can all come back, and we'll certainly listen to everybody's comments and concerns. Sound like a deal?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to continue this matter. But we need a motion to continue.
I'll second.
We got a motion to continue it till November 13th. Paid by Anthony, seconded by Dick. Barbara? John?
Hi.
Anthony?
Dick?
And I'm an I. This matter's continued till November 13th. We look forward to hear some plans here. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Well, it's whoever wants to come up. We're going to let everybody chime in, but we don't want to chime in now till we have, know what we're talking about. We'll let you, we'll believe me, we'll- We need a photometric plan, too. Did they submit that? We've got a ways to go here, folks, okay? So, nothing's going to get rushed, all right? I can assure you that all of your concerns are our concerns as well. I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is. We're going to, no, we're-
There's two ways to be heard, just to let you know.
I don't know if you want to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Chairman? Did you want to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Chairman?
We got to adjourn the meeting, yes. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Would you, by team man?
Recording stopped.